Welcome everyone to Elizabeth Town City Council Regular Meeting for May 20th, 2024. I'd like to ask Councilmember Cindy Walker if she'd lead us in the indication books.
Shall we pray? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessing of this beautiful day. We thank you for the blessing of this wonderful city in which we live, work, and play. We thank you for the blessing of our many employees who work so diligently to keep our cities safe and pleasing to those who either visit or live here. We thank you for the blessing of our mayor and this council. We ask that you continue to lead God and direct us, and we pray that the decisions that we make will not only be beneficial to the city but pleasing to you as well. We also thank you for the blessing of Mr. Jake Owen, who is celebrating his 100th birthday. We look forward to his next 100 as well. Heavenly Father, if we fail you in any way, we ask for your forgiveness. These things we pray in your name, amen.
And if you join me in the buds of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to formally open a municipal road aid hearing. The city currently has zero carryover funds, and its municipal road funds will receive approximately $619,000 during the fiscal year 2025. The LGEA fund has $0 carryover funds and will receive approximately $15,000 during the fiscal year 2025. Any comments or discussion? It's my kind of hearing. We will now close the municipal road aid hearing. First line of business is approval of minutes from May 13th, 2024. If I get a motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Which brings us to a couple of proclamations that I'm pleased to present. First one is Play Tennis Month. Whereas tennis is a fun and easy sport to learn and a great way to stay in shape, and whereas playing tennis provides a strong foundation for fitness, helps develop coordination, flexibility, and strength, and fosters self-esteem and confidence, and whereas participation in tennis has been proven to improve personal health and fitness in many ways, including lowering blood pressure, burning calories, and lowering stress levels, and whereas tennis is a sport of a lifetime where any person of any age or ability can play, and through the month of May 2024, citizens of the city of Elizabeth Town will celebrate Tennis Month as an opportunity for individuals and families to learn more about the game of tennis and its many positive social and health benefits. Now therefore, I Jeff Gregory, Mayor of the City of Elizabeth Town, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Play Tennis Month. And I saw Karen back there, I'd be glad to present it to all of you.
I've got some friends that we understand.
You're welcome to say whatever you like. Speech.
Obviously, we are so grateful for the support through the years. We are thrilled to death to be getting our new five courts very, very soon, and know that the public will greatly appreciate that, the high schools, the programs that we run through the summer and fall. So thank you again for your continued support of tennis and proclaiming May as Play Tennis Month.
Thank you all. Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
The second one is extra special. We have some prized visitors to the room, one especially that I'm proud to do a proclamation for that says, Mr. Owen, you want to stand up there?
Yes, sir.
No need, Charles J. Owen has proclaimed an outstanding citizen of the city of Elizabeth Town. I hereby recognize and celebrate him for representing the city of Elizabeth Town for 100 years. On the 24th day of May 2024, Mr. Owen is celebrated, World War II veteran, recognized for his exemplary service, and he's earned a stellar reputation in the community through his business of many years in Owen Productions Company. And that's signed by me, and I pride the presence to him. Appreciate all you've done for the city of Elizabeth Town, and Chief Thompson, I even hear that he can still be there each other's golf. Now you get your opportunity to make your speech. The floor is yours for as long as you like.
I'll just let you all talk.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate you, Mr. Owen.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Terry Schiff is going to give us a business development update and all the things that he's been involved with.
Well, I know that's their room, don't I?
You do.
Well, when I think of business development around here, I think of change. I don't know about you guys, but I hear it all the time about how much Elizabeth Town is changing. So I just found some examples. It basically told me that Elizabeth Town's been changing for a long time. I mean, you go back all through the history of Elizabeth Town, I don't care whether it's the hospital, or college, Freeman Lake, or whatever it is, we've got a lot of changes. I tried to fix, get some examples there of some changes around town. I can only remember one. I thought Bill might remember more than one. I don't know when the Catholic Church was built. I picked that one out of there, and of course, that's a real old picture of swamps that none of us remember. But people ask me all the time about change, and you know what I tell them? I tell them, "We're not changing, we're just growing." What's our city motto say? Strong and grow since 1779. Because the reason why I say that is, a lot of people don't like change. We have more traffic. We have businesses behind people's homes. We have farms that are turning into neighborhoods. And while we might like it, a lot of people don't like it. So I think it's easier if we just kind of remind people, "Guys, we've been changing for a long time. We've been growing for a long time." And that kind of puts things in perspective a little bit. I kind of think of who the economic drivers were back then, and then I started thinking about who are the economic drivers today. Here's who I think is driving our economy and driving our change. Those are the ones that are bringing people to town, those are the ones that are bringing communities, those are the ones that are promoting industry. Who do you think's the biggest economic driver there? It's a trick question. Because if you look at those six logos, there's another logo down in the bottom right, and that's this one. Guys, you all are the economic change. You're the economic driver. It's the way it's always been, it's the way it's always going to be. These other entities will come and go. They'll have their years on the front end when they're strong, then all of a sudden that will subside, but you guys are the ones, and we've been fortunate, we've had economic drivers in the past, we've had good leadership, and when I say you guys, I'm talking about the council, I'm talking about the mayor, leadership, all of our department heads. That's what's driving this. I talk to people all the time, and I've really boiled it down to three simple things that drives this economic change. The first is public safety. Nobody wants to live in a town that is not safe. That's just the way it is. And it seems simple, but truly, it is that simple. You've got to have a safe community. The next thing is amenities. And I don't necessarily mean just parks, trails, swimming pools, you know, things like that. Those are amenities, and that's what we usually think of about amenities. But I think about things that you don't have to go somewhere else to get them. So it can be restaurants, it can be churches, it can be a hospital, it can be the college, things like that. We're really lucky that we have the amenities that we have. And the third thing is, and on those amenities, we check most of the boxes. There's a few boxes that we don't check, and we're kind of working on those, but we check most of the boxes. But where you all would come in is forward-looking leadership. I tell you, a community, and I hear this from different people, I hear it from people and guests that we have in town, they tell us all the time, "You guys are our kind of people. You're open to suggestions, you're open to change." Look at, look at our planning department. New density, new comprehensive plans. I mean, everybody is looking at things different, but we hear all the time that that's not the same in every community, okay? So I just, and the reason why I say that is because I don't realize, or I don't think that I realized when I was on council, how important that was. And when you're on council, you're busy with day-to-day stuff, you're dealing with budgets and operating the city and making sure everybody's treated fairly, and make sure you want to have life as best as you can for your residents, but I don't know if you understand or if you always remembered those three basics, and I know I didn't. So in any event, the other thing that really, the number one characteristic about all these economic drivers are, in my opinion, they all work so well together. And I put the sports park on there, I could have just, you know, and probably for another presentation to another group or something like that, it's really tourism, okay? So I really think that that probably should be switched out with tourism. But all of these people work together, ECTC does training for Blue Oval, Andy and I work well together with the Industrial Foundation, I've been and put on presentations with Fort Knox Leadership Command. I mean, you know, they're interested in what Elizabeth Town's doing, they're wanting to be a good neighbor. I call Tom Carrico out at Baptist Health on a regular basis, we talk about things like childcare and things like that that we can get to do together and form some partnerships. But I think it's the way that we work together and really, nobody cares who gets credit, they just want to get the job done. So we went around and talked to a bunch of experts, we went up to Georgetown, went to some different places for people that went in through these, you know, boomtown areas and stuff like that. This is what they told us. They told us the first thing you would see is housing. I think that's accurate. The second thing you would see are food, venues, restaurants of all kinds, and then you'll see some commercial activity. Commercial activity, I mean things like banks and shopping centers and different things like that. We've already had a pretty good little run of that, but I think they were correct. They also told us that is the order that we'll see them. So I thought we'd talk a little bit about each one of those. Do people come up to you guys and say, "My gosh, what about the apartments in this town?" I do too. I do too. But those are just some, those are just some pictures of some new projects, and they're massive. The one that kind of gets me is when you're coming, you know, the old Sears building with Townhomes on the left, Panera Bread on the right, you're going towards veterans and you see all those apartments up on that hill, it just, you know, and if you drive up in there and look around, it just scares the daylights out of you, there's so many apartments and stuff out there. But in any event, I just kind of want to tell you all that I got worried about that too, because I was running into so many people like you, Virgil, that were saying, "My gosh, Terry, you all know rent all these apartments." So I went around and started interviewing the leasing agents at these apartments. And I don't want to tell which ones I interviewed, because I don't want to put them on the spot or do anything like that, but let me just tell you some of the comments. Went to one apartment complex, had over 200 units that had been built. I said, "How many units have you got left?" She said, "10." 10 units. So they're starting to build more. They're not going to have one swimming pool, which was very, very nice by the way, they're going to have two. Not going to have one clubhouse, going to have two, okay? So that was a nice comment here. Went to a next, another complex, they are just getting their occupancy started, they are renting out of every building, every 16-unit building that they have before the building is even cleaned up. That's how they're filming them up. They haven't even got their amenities built, as far as their clubhouse and their pool, things like that. I also had the comment from that one that they're seeing things more, it's not just Blue Oval. She's got tenants from Feeding America, she's got tenants from the Taosa, different things like that. So I mean, they're just, nobody is apprehensive in these apartment complexes yet as to if they've overbuilt. This is the, called the Ampure, I think that's the way you pronounce that, Ampure. That is a Shamrock community. You can see up in the top right there, they're actually going to have four different types of communities. They've started on the Jewel first. I've had a tour out there of that. Boy, what a nice facility that is. Then they're going to build across the street, and then they're going to have one that's kind of geared towards senior living, and then they're going to do a BTR community, which is built to rent. So those are going to be homes all on one level. You know, we've talked about this before, you know, we don't want to lose the fact that we need neighborhoods in this town. But these are going to be built to rent, and they're going to be nice single-family residences. So we're kind of looking forward to that.
Now, where is that one?
Out off of Wilson Road, and also, the easiest way to recognize it is behind Mouser's.
Okay.
Okay?
I got you.
So, but that's the way you get to it, is go down to Wilson Road. And gosh, those places are just unbelievable how nice they are. And, but you know, all of them have it that way. I've been worried about the rents, the one I was just talking to, this is the Jewel. So here's their rent scale, their leasing schedule, and on my notes, I can't tell, does that say 1,200 to 1,900? That's for the three bedrooms? Okay, so obviously, the 1,900 is for a three-bedroom, two-bath, okay? It's going to be more than that, because they haven't built any of their three bedrooms yet. So you know, the way costs are going up, that's what that's, but you know, they're not hearing any pushback. One of the places I went to, and all these rents are about the same, so around $1,400 to $1,600 for a two-bedroom, two-bath apartment, that's 1,400 to 1,600, that's just right in the sweet spot, it seems like. So one place I went to had garages, okay? $175 extra for a garage, got to list this long, waiting for a garage. So if you're worried about your rent, you're not going to rent the garage if you're, you know, kind of up against it a little bit. So when they plan more apartments, they're going to build more garages. So I thought that that was encouraging. There's still places in town right now that you can buy a single-family home, and these places are selling single-family homes as quick as they can build them. You've got Magnolia Gardens out there on Pear Orchard, you've got Summit Creek, and you've got Fall Creek, they're going to have quite a few homes, and of course, you have Nicholas Ridge, they build, they're afraid to price their homes at Nicholas Ridge, and I guess all of them are, they're afraid to price the homes until they get finished, because they don't know what their costs are going to be. And they know they're going to sell them within, you know, 30 days anyway. Here's some of the other homes and the developers that are coming in, you've got Miles Point out on North Miles coming in, you've got 30 more homes scheduled this year for Nicholas Ridge, you've got Fall Creek Estates, it's going to be a big one, Ashton Park, The Ascend, I put a question mark there, that's going to be out on the old Wade Farm. I think those plans have changed several times, and some of their single-family residents might actually be townhomes. And then you've got Long Tree Development, which will have over 200-plus homes, and I'll take a second and just kind of reflect back, let's talk a little bit about Long Tree. So Long Tree Development is from Utah, and they came in, and they brought their CEO, they brought their land acquisition person in, then they brought their operations person in, and as Andy kind of mentioned a couple of weeks ago, or last week, when he gave his summary, it's really good when you can come into community and you can put everybody in the same room, okay? So we brought these people in, they had some questions, I told them to try and get their questions written down before they came, so that we'd have the right people in. But Joe Raverman was there, and we had Stormwater there, and you know, we had our engineers there, I mean, you know, just the whole, every question they can ask, these guys are from Utah. So we've got to make sure that, you know, it costs a lot of money to travel, and we've got to make sure that when they get here, we can answer their questions and take care of them. So in any event, after we had that conversation with them, and I appreciate the team all getting together for that, I was in Ed's office one day when we got the call from them and said they were under contract with their property, and boy, they were looking forward to coming and working in detail, so that's great. This is also a group that, and we've had this, not just from them, but we've had this from other developers too, this was a group that before they left, they had some property up front, and you remember what they asked? What, what, what do you all need? What can we do to make this better? Y'all want us to build a playground? You want us to build some trails? You need a park? What do you need? You tell us what you need, and we'll do it. And that, and that's, that's what they're getting from us, that's the vibe they're getting from us, and you know, and it's coming back to us, so.
Where's that developed at, Terry?
Nicholas Ridge. From Nicholas Ridge.
Boom Farm on the other side of Nicholas Ridge, across from Wine and Springs.
Yeah, and so, you know, and personally, I was a little concerned about, you've got to be a pretty tough builder to build up there, because the lay of the land is not exactly flat, okay? And then when they came for their visit, it was pouring down rain, it was muddy, it was bad. So, and they were going to walk the property, okay? So when they got to our meeting, I said, "Did you all get to walk your property?" And I was hoping they'd say, "No." And they said, "Oh, yeah, we've been all over it." And I said, "You have?" And they said, "They said, 'Yes, the loggers are up there logging some timber off of it,'" and they took us in their four-wheelers, we had a ball. And so you just never know. And then you got to remember too, they're from Utah, they understand hills. So it was fine. So in any event, I feel good about the housing, I thought we had too many apartments, I don't think we do. You know, when we did our revision of our comprehensive plan, you all, one of those estimates for 5,000 new jobs with all the spinoff and indirect jobs, one of those low estimates was 77,000 new people. So let's say that only half of the plant opens right now. Well, half 77, we're still in the 30s, so I mean, you know, we're going to need a lot of, a lot of homes and a lot of residential units. Let's talk about restaurants. It's always nice, I know some people like to have family-owned businesses, some people like to have non-franchise businesses, I think what we're going to have to do is get a mix, and the mix so far has been the franchise businesses. Let me tell you the main difference that I've seen. You can't convince somebody that has a family-owned business to open another business, you just can't convince them of, because they're, they say, "I'm out of family." Or, you know, "I'm wore out," you know? You might get somebody to relocate a business, but that's tough on a business to relocate. It's bad for your business if you continue to relocate. So, and the difference is, is when you call one of the franchise businesses, they're glad to take your call, because what are they in business to do? Grow. That's what they want to do. So they want to hear from communities and different things like that. Slim Chickens. There are so many chicken franchises out there. There's more chicken, there's super chicken. I called one today that's called Big Daddy's Chicken. So I mean, you know, there's just, apparently chicken is like the new pizza, it relatively low in cost, and everybody likes chicken. When I called Slim Chickens, February of '22, they said, "No, we don't have any one in your territory. But we do have somebody that's responsible for your territory." So of course, my, all I'm trying to do is get on their radar screen. But in any event, they got some information, we talked a little bit, they said they would pass the information on along. As a happenstance, about two weeks later, I was in Nashville flying to Florida, and I was walking right down the line there, getting ready to get on the tarmac and get into the plane and sit next to them, but it was a bunch of execs from Houchn's Industries, and I said, "Where are you guys all off to?" And they were going to a restaurant expo in Orlando, and so that's where they were going. I can't, I don't think I ever mentioned Slim Chickens to them, but I knew then, they were looking for a restaurant component to go next to their Ace Hardware, and they're going to build more of them. So that's just who they landed on, so it's kind of interesting how things happen like that. Drakes, when I called BHG, I wasn't looking for another gourmet hamburger place, I was looking for a steakhouse, okay? Because I thought, man, it'd be great if we could land a Malone's or something like that. I was a little out of my league with Malone's, because I talked to the construction superintendent that's getting ready to build, they've broken ground now. He said, "Terry, the last Malone's we built in Nashville, Tennessee, we spent over $10 million on it." So that's, we can use some elevated dining, but I don't know that.
It's all those long trips they had to get us.
That must have been what it was. That must have been what it was. Crumble Cookie is kind of interesting. I didn't know what a crumble was, but Cindy, you'll know this, because right when you come over the Destin Bridge to the right there, there's a crumble cookie. And of course, we can't go in with my daughter, all she's ever wanted is a crumble cookie and a fruta bone, okay? And but I called Crumble Cookie and started in with my pitch and asked if they'd be interested, and the lady says, "We're coming." I said, "Oh, you are?" And she says, "Yeah, we're coming." I said, "Well, I don't, I haven't even told you where I am yet." And she says, "It doesn't matter, we're coming." So when you go on their website, this is what it looks like for their franchise opportunities. It's all blacked out. There is not one community on their map on their website. Their pat answer is, "We're coming." So they've got people, it's, you know, it's a cookie store, but they've got people, you know, that are responsible for all the states, and most of these franchises, the unfortunate thing is, is that they won't give you just a one-off, they just won't give you one location. They want, they want a group, they want a syndicate, they want an LLC, they want somebody that promises 15 stores in four states and you'll do it in five years, you know, those kind of things. But in any event, I felt, I thought it was kind of interesting to do that. Let me see. On the left there, I had some restaurants that I was going to review with you, and I thought it might be better just to leave the names off, I don't want to jinx anything. And so I just kind of left those off, but I will look over on the right and tell you that here's kind of what I'm really pushing for, and this is based on feedback just from the community and different people. I think we could use a good butcher shop, cheese shop, you know, deli, something along those lines. Jessica's always been on me, she wants, what do you call them, Jay, a three, three meat and goat?
I'm eating three.
A what?
A meat and three.
A meat and three, where you get a meat and three veggies or something like that? Y'all remember the old Houchn's Deli, you used to go in there and do that? Don't tell them how many people they fed at lunchtime during the business week.
I remember a little week.
That's right. I'd really like to see some elevated dining, and we've been working with a group with a steak restaurant. I don't, I don't know if we'll get that group, but we'll get one group. But we do need, you know, we at least need to have one restaurant where you can call and make a reservation, okay? I'd love to see a family-style Italian, this is kind of more my wish than somebody else's wish, I just love Italian, and it seems like if you have a group and you want to go out and you want to celebrate, Italian's always a good place to do it. There's some talk of a, of a local dinner club, to where you actually are a member of a dinner club, pay a dues, pay dues and stuff like that. So on the restaurant, we're going to get there with the restaurants, that, I don't think that's going to be a problem. Let me tell you what they all ask with the restaurants. The first thing, they say, "Where are you?" And you tell them, and they want to know what your population is. That's kind of a killer, okay? Because we're just not there yet, okay? Sometimes when they ask what your population is, you know, I would tease people, I'd say, "Well, I'm going to tell you what the population is," but I said, "You can't hang up on me, because I got to tell you the rest of the story, okay? Because we're just not there yet." But when your population of your city starts with a three, 31,000, 32,000, you know, we just don't get over the hump, okay? You can tell them what the population of the zip code is, and they're typing it in when you're talking to them, okay? They're typing in their census report, they're typing in the city, they already know when they ask the question. If you type in the zip code, I think the zip code population, 42701, comes around 40-some thousand, so that helps a little bit, 41,000. If you talk about the county's population, you can say 120,000, that helps a little bit, you can talk about the daytime population, 115,000, 120,000, that's kind of a guess, I'm not sure exactly what that'd be, it's kind of hard to measure. But the population is what hurts with the restaurants, but, but we'll get there. Commercial activity, I think this is one of the neatest commercial projects that has gotten going here, I don't know if you all have been down to Social Almaine, they call it the Assembly down there, and that is a really, really popular place. And that top right picture, that's one that I think the newspaper put in the article that they did on them, my gosh, you can go down there, it'd be 300 or 400 people in there. And I know when I have guests in town, stuff like that, that's one of the places where I like to take them, I take them there and I take them to swamps and different places, but that's a good place, because it gets their imagination going as to what they could do, you know, when they're in town. Commercial activities, you know, I've told a lot of people no on commercial activities, and, and I don't mean to discourage anybody, and I don't mean to bust somebody's dreams, but I work with people that come in and they say they want to open this, or they want to open that. You know, guys, if, if somebody doesn't have a business plan, that puts a red flag up. If they have a business plan and they don't have, they're not accounting for all of their expenses, then you can tell pretty quick, they're trying to make it look good on paper, because they're ignoring the fact that they're going to have some other expenses. So that's a red. So, that's a red flag. If you're opening up a new business and you've never taken in a first dollar and you've got a big fat salary in there for yourself, that's kind of another red flag. But I would rather tell somebody no, or I would really rather tell somebody, I think you need to do some more research. I think you need to go see Patricia Krausman. I think you need to work on a better business plan. I think you need to talk to your banker, something like that. And I've told several people that because I'd, I'd rather tell them that because we're not going to be, we're not desperate to where we're looking for those, for businesses to where you have to kind of ruin somebody's dream by making them go broke, okay? So, I've turned down a lot. We've also lost a few. I had a bunch of South Koreans in here from New Jersey. I'm telling you what, you hadn't, you've never seen anything like it. They'll call you at 2:00 in the morning with an idea. And they just talk all over the place. But I mean, you can ask Jeff and Ed. We had them in meetings. They brought lawyers in. They brought their corporate people. My gosh, we thought we were there. They were going to build a Korean village. I mean, we had them down here looking at the old jail property. We had them all over this town and, and started building a really, really good relationship with them. And then, boom, they just disappeared. Almost to the fact that where they wouldn't even answer their email. So, I mean, it, it just, it just, I guess it just happens, but they were on to something else. And we felt like that we'd done everything that they'd asked us to do. In hindsight, when you go back and look, I think there were probably a few things they were wanting that we weren't prepared to do. We lost another one. We lost, we had a modular housing company that we were working with. Did a, and this one, and this one kind of stunned because we had worked really hard building a relationship with these guys and they ended up not coming and they're building their plant in Louisville. And I hated it. Andy and Rick Gaines helped us with that one as well.
I'm not sure that one's lost completely yet.
It might not be, but I mean, you know, and I say we don't know exactly what it lost to. $500,000 in incentives is probably what lost it for us because that's what they got from the city of Louisville. You know, that was just something that we weren't ready to do. So, in any event, we, you get some and you lose some. That's kind of the nature of this. This is what I would like to see. I'd like to see some more of these little nice upscale-looking strip centers and things like that. These are the type of projects that a lot of small businesses are wanting because most people that are small business owners, they are not contractors. They're not developers. They can't hire architects and the teams that it takes in order to go out and build a single standing location. They just want a nice place to rent so they can start doing business. And the one on the top left there is the one out there where Vision Works is. You know, on top of that on Ring Road? So, the fellow that built that, he's from over at Bardstown. That left side is, I think that's, oh, it's a hearing company in there now. Anyway, that was the last one to rent. And when I called him, David Manley, who it is on Bardstown, and I said, David, I might have a prospect for you. He said, Terry, I rented that building before it was ever finished. And he says, that's why I waited so long to put the sign up. I knew if I put the sign up, people would be calling me. And he, once again, he didn't know what his rent was going to be until he got his building built. He's built three of those buildings, three identical buildings in three different cities, and they've ever one rented before he had them finished. So, I'd like to see, and I kind of use that story with other developers because that's what I kind of like to promote, like to see a little bit more of. The one on the right there is going to be the Apex Center, be out on Ring Road. If y'all remember, that's the one that Dr. Robbins actually got started. The one on the left there is out at Woodland. They don't have a sign or anything up yet and it's for the same reason. They, they know, they've already got some of it leased, but they know that they're going to lease the rest of it. The one there on the right is Town Crossing. That's where Neil Archer is going to put his business. I talked to him this week and he said, the first day he put that picture out on social media, he said, I got five phone calls the next day. You know, and they're just now putting the footers in. I mean, you know, so I would like to see some more of those kind of projects. So, when you all see some of that going on, I know that's a change, but that's a good change. We need, we need to have more of those. One of our developers in town has got a commercial portion of their project. So, what I'm doing there is I've proposed that we do something similar to, have y'all ever been up to Westport Village in Louisville? It's a destination shopping and eating center. It's not a lifestyle center, but it's close. It's, you know, you go there to eat. That's where you go in and they say, well, we don't have a table for an hour. Good, you get to go shopping, okay? Or you eat, you have a big dinner, then you get to go shopping and walk it off, stuff like that. So, our idea behind that, and I've already talked to that developer about it. She loves the idea. She thinks it would be scalable, which means she would need to scale it down because of the amount of space that she has. But I mean, you know, that, there's 40-some businesses up there in Westport Village. That, that's where our target would be. That's who we would go and say, if you all like this concept, come to Elizabeth Town because we're going to do a concept real, real similar to it. Here's some of our challenges. Talked to you a little bit about population. That's a challenge, but we're, we're going to get there. South side's still a challenge. Help is coming. That's all I'm going to say about that, that help is coming on the south side. Retail commercial inventory, just what I was talking about there, that's still a challenge. Childcare, huge challenge. You know childcare, think about it. It's an industry that was having a tough time. The government started subsidizing it and as soon as they cut the funds off, the childcare started closing because it's just, it's regulated heavily, which it needs to be, okay? But it's, the wages are going up and you've got to have a good quality of people there. So, childcare is going to continue to be a little bit of a problem. I think the way you're going to, I think the way we're going to end up fixing most of childcare is it's going to have to become a benefit, like a, if you're a company that has employees, you're going to have to help your employees with their childcare, okay? Now, maybe you don't help them with hospitalization, but maybe you help them with childcare. And I say that because maybe they've opted out of hospitalization, okay? Do something along those lines.
Help them with both.
Do what?
You don't have to help them with both.
Yeah.
He's caring how things do.
I know. You see where that X, I've quit listening to people that tell me they're worried about supply chain, interest rates, inflation, or workforce. I've just quit listening to them. They're, they're just not for us. Because I'll tell you something, that's just part of business. And these businesses that are wanting to come, they say, don't worry about it. We'll work through it. Crumble. So, I was talking to Neil out of Crumble and I couldn't believe how many people out there are working in that cookie store. And you know what he told me? He said, I, I put an ad on Indeed and I had 300 and some applications, 300 some applications. He interviewed 150 himself. He, he hired 50 employees. And he said, I've got 20 in my back pocket for when we grow and I need 20 more. Now, a lot of those are part-time positions, okay? But that, guys, that's an $8 an hour job plus tips. And that's how many applications he had. These people, there's, I know there's a lot of jobs out there, but there's a lot of people out there and they need to find work. So, I've kind of quit listening to the, I don't know if we're going to be able to find the people or not. You'll find them if you give a good work environment and you have a nice, fun place to work, enjoyable place to work. Now, I know that some are entry-level jobs and, you know, different things, but I've kind of quit listening to those. So, I think we're going to, I think we're going to get over those hurdles. I think this is going to be our stimulus for the foreseeable future. We've got town hall renovations, town mall renovations, excuse me. We are so fortunate that a local developer ended up with that property because he's going to do some really, really wonderful things. And I'm going to make fun of him just a little bit, but do y'all ever remember that town mall having a fountain in it?
Yep.
I don't remember that.
Yeah.
And did you know there's actually a video out there floating around on social media that says town mall, it's not dead yet? And that's what it is. A guy goes through with a camera and he's talking about town mall. And he says, we're not dead yet. And that's what he does. But in any event, that's going to be a, that's going to be a big stimulus out there. I think the Baptist Health Office Tower is going to be a huge stimulus and maybe not for the reason that you think, but they own and rent property all over this town. And some of those properties now are going to come vacant. And when they come vacant, that helps us with our inventory problem, okay? So, I think that's going to be a good stimulus for us. Got a new grocery store. That's going to be a big stimulus. Got two new hotels coming. That's going to be a catalyst for us. We're eventually going to have some downtown housing here. I'd still like to see 400, 500 people live in downtown because I think the downtown needs it. And I think we'll see that starting to happen. I think the new connector trail will help. The outdoor music venue will certainly be a stimulus. That will be a stimulus for more hotels. That will be more restaurants, more business. That's going to be a huge, huge stimulus as far as that goes. And I think the infrastructure improvements that we're, that we're doing right now will then once again help. It's already helped as we've explained, the, the infrastructure improvements that we're making and how many millions of dollars we're spending out there that you guys and the city are spending out there. That really helps because they know we're committed now to the, to the south side. So, I think those are going to be the things going forward that we need to look at. You all might have some other ideas on what you think are the more stimulus, the things that would give us a little bit more catalyst. And if you do, let me know. I'll answer any questions for you.
Great presentation. Really good presentation.
If you all, I've got one lady here in town, she calls me all the time. Terry, have you ever been to so-and-so to eat? And I said, no, but I guess I'm going to have to go. So, so she called and told me about a rotisserie chicken place in Louisville. So, I'd never heard of this place.
Chicken.
Chicken, more chicken. They do theirs on charcoal. It's a little bit different, so.
What about Chicken Salad Chick? I thought we were talking to them.
Yep, Chicken Salad Chick. They're big on E-Town. I think, I think they'll be here. They have not committed in any way. I don't want that, you know, but I do think they'll be here, yes. And you know that from Florida too, don't you?
So, I'll tell you, anytime I think of something, I run into Terry, hey, why don't you reach out to so-and-so, reach out to them? You know what he says? I already did it. I already talked to him.
Yeah, and like I said, if nothing else, I want to get on their radar screen because you never know when they're sitting around in a meeting because you've got to remember they're wanting to grow their businesses too. And we're showing up on a lot of people's radar screens. Some people, they, they find us a different way. So, you remember Lone Tree? So, when Lone Tree, the development group out of Utah, I talked to them several times on the phone, finally got them to Elizabeth Town. So, the first question we asked when they got in the room was, is how'd you hear about Elizabeth Town? And we thought they were going to give us this real sophisticated answer about, oh, y'all showed up on one of our MSA statistical analysis charts or, you know, we had a marketing due diligence firm that went out and did all this. Remember what the guy said? I was building affordable housing in Guantanamo Bay, Cuba. And there was a guy doing landscape and he says, you ought to go to Elizabeth Town, Kentucky.
We're getting 200 house subdivision.
You never, ever know when you're out promoting your town, what's going to stick, you know, like that. But in any event, thank you very much. I think we've got a big, bright future ahead of us.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Terry.
You have the longest presentation.
He, yes, he, he's a champion over Don Hill.
Hello, Don.
Don't you have more employees though?
All right, Judge, you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, we're going to start off with the second reading of ordinance number 82024, meaning zoning map for 1121 and 1131 Alex Drive. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Judge Howard.
This ordinance amends the official zoning classification for the property located at 1121 and 1131 Alex Drive from regional commercial or C3 to high-density residential or R6 to allow for such uses as multifamily apartment development for property owned by HGV Properties LLC. This change was recommended by the Elizabeth Town Planning Commission and can be approved by the Elizabeth Town City Council as it was found to be in agreement with the city's comprehensive plan. The full text of the ordinance is available on the city's website or by contacting the city clerk. This is a second reading by summary and is thus available for your consideration.
Any discussion? Need a motion in a second to adopt?
Motion.
Second.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Fulkerson?
Yes.
Councilmember Springsteen?
Yes.
Councilmember Walker?
Yes.
Councilmember Willoughby?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiseman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Ordinance number 92024, annexation of a portion of South Wilson Road. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Judge Howard.
This ordinance annexes property along a portion of South Wilson Road owned by Brook Street Baptist Church. I messed this up the last time.
Jimenez.
Jimenez.
Jimenez. Jimenez.
The Jimenezes, okay? Hardin County Government and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet totaling approximately 8.8 acres. The property will be zoned regional commercial or C3 upon annexation based on the planning commission recommendation. The owners gave consent to this annexation. The city of Elizabeth Town gave the required 45-day notice to Hardin County. Again, the full text of the ordinance can be found at the city's website or by contacting the city clerk. This is a second reading by summary and is now available for your consideration.
Any discussion? Need a motion in a second to adopt, please.
Motion. Second.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Fulkerson?
Yes.
Councilmember Springsteen?